About a second.
I'll say it.
All right, back in the game. Ray, you feeling good?
Yep, we're all set.
Okay, superintendent update, please.
I'll make it somewhat brief. So, end of the year, trust and fear is coming upon us. We feel like we're already into next year. I'm planning professional development, what the first few days of school look like. A lot of hiring practices, working on a new onboarding process for new folks coming in. Typically, we don't have a lot of folks coming in the district. This year, we have, I think right now, we're at ten, maybe eleven. That's a lot of onboarding for us. And so, working with John and me here and administrative assistants to try to tighten up that process for us. So, we're a little better at it. Continuing to keep an eye on the legislator and the legislation as it's coming nearly to an end. Things are slowing down a little bit. Thanks to our friends in the New Hampshire School Administrators Association, New Hampshire School Board Association. They have really done a nice shot of adequacy, adequacy, to help push some of the things that were going to be potentially detrimental to students into public education off the table for now. Doesn't mean they don't come back, because they always come back. But for now, things are looking a little better than they were. We also appreciate our commissioner, excuse me, our governor for vetoing, taking away some local control to public school districts when it comes to implementing safe measures that they feel are important in implementing safety for kids. In your packet, or on your table, I should say, I've put a packet of information for you, and I think it's just important, with what has been going on this year, and actually for the last five years, with the public attacking, not only from a local level, a state level, but a national level. I think it's important for you to think about as a board where you stand in the things that are with you, people that are with you, supports that you have, and sort of partners in this fight for defending public education. And so, the first page of your packet is just your policy, your ethics policy. And it really talks about you making decisions to encourage public education for the student's benefit. And it's one of your major responsibilities that the board has. As you keep moving in the packet, and again, watch, I hope you see how this build. What's next in the packet is our first page of our strategic plan. And on our first page of our strategic plan, it talks about our missions of our district, the missions of those schools, what we believe in, our expectations. And that all talks about helping students learn, looking at things, and giving perspectives of things so that students can walk away from our schools, elementary, middle, high school, thirteen years here, as contributing members of society, lifelong learners. Again, all things that public education provides, we have encapsulated that, and we already have our visions and missions in place. Behind there, I left you the New Hampshire School Board Association mission and vision. So, these are now partners that have very similar visions and missions that you do that also support your policy and board ethics. And you have the New Hampshire School Administrators Association. Again, vision and mission with all their resolutions. They talk about how we continue to be the voice for public education and students in New Hampshire. And then, so that I'm being just, you have people that support, people that have, that are partners in this with you. And then, I've added three articles from my Commissioner of Education. And if you haven't had an opportunity, I know I shared some of this with you before through an email. I think you should take some time and take a read over this. Again, this is the Commissioner of the Public Education for the state of New Hampshire, talking about change is hard, talking about how we're knowingly dismantling family values. There's actually a lot to undertake. And he has fallen under a lot of criticism and a lot of pressure because of this. But also, he has a good level of support from people in the state. And if you look at our neighbors down the road, up the road, across the road, over in Croydon, what almost happened over there, he had a very big hand in helping them orchestrate and move that process forward, to a point where it was almost criminal in meetings more necessarily posted that were attended by him and the school board. But I think it's important for you to see, again, where you are at with your policy, where you are at with your mission and vision in public education, your partners that support you and that are there advocating for you, and then the Commissioner of Education. And then, just so that, again, we have a nice blended flavor, an article that was just in the Valley News, and it talks about the attack on public education. And I know, on the board topics that they carry in, I want to talk about sort of our ability to retain and retain our teachers. And this really talks about the exit of teachers and administrators and superintendents and board members from public education because of some things that are going on. Intentional things that are going on to drive people away, to help change really the makeup on what public education looks like in the state. And then, finally, so that you can see, you have other people that are fighting the good fight with you. Some letters from the School Administrators Association, collective voices there, some other members from other folks within the community, out into the state, and then a couple of the articles that were pushing back against the commission. So, just to back up one second to the Croydon piece, and I know we've gone over it. The Croydon piece, if that was to hold up, and again, we talked about how it would probably end up in court, but it could have been the brick that started the dismantling of public education. And unfortunately, there is nothing, I think, that would be more satisfying to some of our legislators and our Commissioner of Education as to dismantle that. What he believes, or they believe, is broken. Ninety percent of the kids in the state of New Hampshire attend public school. It works for them. It has always worked for them. It is a backbone of our democracy. It is one of the last standing community pieces that remain. If you think about churches and Boy Scouts and all those things, they're gone. And that all has now fallen to school. And we are asked to pick up a lot. And we are asked to deal with kids that walk in with all sorts of problems and all sorts of issues. Well, the parents can do those things, or parents can't do those things. There are a lot that falls within our four walls that we try to do. Schools have always done one thing, is they teach from all sides. We should never be on one side of the issue and on the other side of the issue. Our job is to, here's the issue, here's all sides of that issue, so that you as an individual, when you graduate from here and you move on to your adult life, you have the ability to make your own decisions. You just heard about that through the NEAS process, and we talked about our curriculum, we talked about opportunities for kids. All those things make up public education. I think as we continue to move forward again, some of the legislation has silenced to some degree. It will come back. Voting matters. Attending public meetings matters. If you believe in public education, we should be sharing our voices. Our voices should be loud, and we should be encouraging our neighbors to do the same. Because when you sit still, when you don't pay attention, when you are not involved, we saw what almost happened next door. And again, it could have been very detrimental to none of those families, but public education as a whole must.
Yeah, sure. Thank you.
I'm good.
All right, good update. Thank you. So, to open board topics, pick up Croydon. I think my hope is that people understand the story of what happened with just a handful of voters on the town meeting day. And then, an unprecedented, hard to believe, rallying engagement of voters to vote. I think it was three seventy-seven to two, to reconsider cutting the budget in half and destroying public education and Croydon as it was known. Just really amazed by Amanda Leslie and others in the community that were able to rally people in a productive, positive way to consider the longer term future. So, my hope for Sunupi is we can learn from that, be inspired from that, and hopefully have a much better showing in local elections. I think in March, we had forty-five percent, which is unconscionable to me that we have this many registered voters sitting on their couch when there's local elections. So, I hope we take the warning, the near miss in Croydon, and Sunupi chooses to greatly accelerate its voting in local elections and show up. That's when your voice matters. People can whine, people can Facebook jockey. But it doesn't mean anything in America if you don't vote. Otherwise, you might as well be on mute and another's involved. Voting matters, and I hope Sunupi rallies to that, with public ed. For the kindergartners coming in, could look radically different by the time they die school if we don't advocate for public ed and student rights. Board topics beyond that, fairly quiet, segment about the end of the year. But I'm not getting a whole lot of emails or chatter. So, how is it for you guys?
I was about to chatter. I did ask Russ to talk a little bit about just what we're doing, given what's going on, great resignation, and just in public education in general. And what are we doing to proactively retain our good people, like our teachers, our administrators, our support staff, all of that? I mean, it's a fiercely competitive workplace right now. And this is obviously a really politically charged environment that all of you work in. So, I'm just curious to know what we're doing to proactively focus on retaining the good people that we have.
It's a really good question. And we have definitely, I had to look at how we do that over the last few years. And so, I think first and foremost would be commending the board and the teacher associations for developing a contract, and then getting that contract passed through the town, which recognizes teachers for their hard work. It's got a longevity piece to it. I think there's a piece of that when you have a contract in place. It helps teachers feel comfortable that that's there. And there's a value for them that people have shown by passing the contract. For other staff, we've talked during the ABC process about, we run out and we did some comparisons. And so, we from periodically go out and do comparisons. And I talked about doing some more just recently, looking at contract service, looking at administrative assistance, to ensure that we can be competitive with what's going on around us so that we can continue to keep people in our district and attract people to our district. And I think the last piece, people that get an education want to be teachers. You've heard about thirty recommendations from the NEAS, and how Sharon talked about that. It was really all of us that were involved in that ability to get those recommendations and how we drove NEAS. In a lot of other districts, there's a lot of other distractions and a lot of noise. And those noise take away from what you can do educationally. And so, when teachers can come someplace and teach, that's meaningful for them. And I know that's a bit difficult to some degree, but as an educator, I think if you were to ask some of the educators in the room, or some of the teachers in the room, what's important to you, and it's the time that I get to spend with kids, teaching them and passing that knowledge on, seeing them grow, and not necessarily dealing with behaviors, dealing with conflicts of administration, dealing with constant substitute teachers, dealing with whatever some of the other, a lot of parent issues, a lot of bullying issues, a lot of fights, a lot of drugs, a lot of alcohol, all of that sort of noise stuff. I think people, I think it gets, not that it's not here at all, because it certainly is, but it's not as prevalent or it's not as loud here. And I think people appreciate that. And I think that people feel like, I can come here and be the professional that I want to be. And I don't know if Tarek, or Walter, or Sean, or Mikan, or Kelly want to add anything to that as well.
Yeah, I do think, you know, something that we're going to need to look at. You know, so things I can say, things have changed. So, I'll use social studies as an example. Hate to say I've been doing this for nineteen years now, but nineteen years ago, we had a social studies opening, and probably have seventy, seventy-five applicants for that position. I think I just talked with Selen from the state the other day, which is a big school that has teachers coming out, I think they'd want coming out. So, I'm not sure what that's going to look like yet, but it's certainly, probably, the biggest challenge, I think, that we're going to have over the next five or six years, is how to recruit and retain.
I mean, it's a huge challenge in the corporate world, and I think we have a lot more levers to pull too, right? In a corporate space, in a publicly funded workplace, it's obviously really different. And I think, you know, how your teachers are, what you're doing to retain teachers is really very different than what you're doing to retain administrators versus your support staff. And if we're looking at all of those different segments that collectively make up the district, it just, I don't know, it seems to me that we probably need to think a little bit differently, or just at least have an eye on that and what we might need to be doing to be thinking about it beyond just, it's not always just about pay anymore, right? And so, what are the things, what are the puts and takes that we need to consider to really focus on that? Because, you know, there's a tipping point. I don't know what it is for us, but, you know, just to have, I think it's just an important thing to be aware of right now.
Yeah, we've had staff this year that have been here for, you know, ten plus years, that have a job open in their, in their community, that, you know, so I'm taking a thirty-minute less commute, maybe for a little more pay, or maybe just about the same pay. And it's hard to tell somebody, or it's, before, I think we could convince people just, you know, not to look, but now I think people are saying, yeah, it's worth my work. You're not going to be able to combat all of it, but again, making sure that people feel valued is really important, and it's not necessarily financial. And I think we try to do that. One of the things, again, back to the teacher contract, you folks have dedicated a lot of professional money for, you heard that again through NEAS, coursework, professional development. We encourage teachers to go continue their education, to continue to get the next degree. And so, sometimes you can't get those opportunities in other places. So, I think there's some value there for teachers and for us that helps retain.
I mean, there's, you know, there's work-life balance considerations, you know, not always within the context of a school day, but certain roles where that might be appropriate to consider. You know, whether rewards recognition type programs, I don't know if those exist here, but just, you know, things that maybe we need to think differently about too.
Yeah, I think we always have to remember to say thank you and show appreciation for everything that everybody does every day. And I think it's sometimes easy to overlook that, but I know some of the, some teachers have said in multiple districts, thanks for asking me a question, and thanks for shopping in San Juan. Sometimes it's those little things that, you know, like the people, again, it's that sense of value.
I'm glad for the way that you did it out. Just held the board, so we're going to chat right along. Trust you and your family, make sure you make them the meeting fit. We'll see you soon. I think, just looking at it, working at a place that's, you know, nationally known as a great place to work, and I was afraid to look today, but I think maybe the openings, some very high paying, some entry level, and a lot in between. The culture and development are two of the leaders that seem, just reading on my own about districts, finding a lot of the same parallels to the business world. So, I'm hopeful with the way that the teachers' union and you guys worked on the contract, which is a very, I thought, is a very firm stake in the ground. This is the way we work here. With that support, financial support, community support, I'm hopeful that we can play that up a little bit. Because it doesn't sound like other districts have quite the same sticking around with that. But I think it's a great recurring board topic. It's official tonight. You can make it a board topic every time. If you don't have it in your update, it might just be that there's no major update, but it's being discussed. These are small steps you can take. But it's definitely, there aren't enough workers coming. Boards don't have seats full. Administrators are, probably half the positions are open, aren't going to get apprehended. And it's frightening that anybody trying to run a business where another, or another local business is going to close for a week, because between COVID and not enough hires, they're just going to close. They don't know what else to do. So, this is brutal, and it's only going to, it's not going away. It's not like it's fixed in the fall. But however we can bring attention and voice to appreciation for those that are teaching our students and running our schools and driving our buses and try to keep them, anything we can do. Let's get caught trying to do whatever is reasonable, and maybe a little bit more to do so. So, I appreciate you pushing for this. It's an important topic for the board. Anything else? Eric just shrunk the board here tonight.
I'll say it very well.
Okay.
And I think, you know, the one thing I will say is, you know, hopefully, our community will not get complacent as, you know, it has gotten in other places. Because you talk about retention and recruiting, those in public education in a lot of other places are getting beaten up. You know, the people that are against public education are making a lot of noise. And we've got a great community that supports our teachers, and our schools, and our administrators, and we need to keep strong. We're all in it together. And hopefully, the folks that want to be in public education recognize that as a big differentiation. You know, that's a big, big thing.
I agree. All right, we've got some plumbing work to do. So, what's, what do you have for policies, first reading, your comments?
I'd like a motion to approve the first reading for following policies. B-I-E, G-B-C-D, I-H-B-B, I-J-O-C, and P-B-C-D.
I'll second.
You'll second. Okay. So, just real quick, there's only five of them. The first one, B-I-E is board member indemnification. So, that's the one that basically protects individual members of the board from personal liability. There's been a paragraph added to that one that does say, and an exception to that, obviously, is if somebody goes outside of the lines. I think with the veteran board that we have, we all know where those lines are, but I think it's really important, you know, as new board members come in moving forward, that they know that if they go outside the lines, they're doing something illegal or making some sort of an agreement on behalf of the district outside of the board, you know, things like that, they're going to be personally liable for. So, you know, it's important to differentiate that. The background investigation and criminal history records check, that's just been tweaked to add some additional definitions. And also, the superintendent can designate somebody else to conduct those checks as long as that person's not in the appropriate mandatory training. Gifted account of students is I-H-B-B. That's actually a new policy because it's now mandated that there's some annual reporting involved. I think by August first of each year, every summer, we have to do some reporting on that. So, that's in there. Volunteers, that is up the definition of designated volunteer. Just makes sure those folks are going to get trained and background checks. You know, if they're going to be, you know, regular ongoing contact with students. And then, finally, the school closing policy, there's been a third paragraph added to that that just establishes expectations formally for a mother-weather instruction base. So, that's a management policy as well. And I think that's it. Any questions?
No, thank you for your work. Appreciate your work on that.
So, I guess we'll have a second reading. In August, I'll assume those need to be done before.
Great. All in favor of accepting the first reading? I thought it was, yeah.
Aye.
unanimous. Thank you. Action items, we've got a bunch to work through. We need to, let's switch everybody here. Accept, motion to accept teacher resignation, please.
I'd like a motion to accept teacher resignation.
Start with that motion.
Hold on, I got my piles and papers out of order here. Hang on a second. I lost my teacher resignation. I, thank you. Shuffle, shuffle. I want to give people their due. Did I get a motion in a second? I got distracted there. Okay, good. We wanted to thank Brittany Valentine for her service. She wrote a very thoughtful letter regarding the positive experience the last three years. She is moving to Colorado in June, and we want to wish her the very best. It's great when folks are here nineteen years. It's also great when people are here three years and have the superpowers and insight. And so, we're very appreciative of Brittany Valentine. So, thank you very much. Motion, all in favor of accepting resignation, no teacher, please say aye.
Aye.
Let me spin again my, I'm going to move right here. I look for a motion to approve the proposed business plan for the Sunupi Middle High School store.
Approve that business plan?
I'll second.
Okay. Discussion? Questions? Commentary?
I just had a question. What's the vision, and maybe this is more question for Jen. What's the vision for, like, how students will be involved in this going forward? So, I understand that they're going to create and curate all the materials and things that we're going to sell, but this is kind of like the brainchild of senior project that's grown from there. So, what's the future vision for how engaged students will be in which parts of all of this?
Yeah, so, Sophie Hubert helped me develop a business plan that is very business-like for the store to outline procedures and all sorts of things, similar to an actual business. And that's really what we're going for, is to provide a platform for students to experience relevant, real-world business opportunities and give access to the community and all of the work that our students are doing here at school. It might also streamline some processes that the school has. So, ordering tickets for drama performances, or purchasing tickets for the MD Gold event, while also seeing and being able to take home some of the artwork and STEAM projects that students are learning and building and creating. Does that answer your question?
Kind of. So, like, they'll be doing all the accounting elements and stuff that are talked about through the plan?
Yeah.
Just you'll be overseeing and they do the work?
Right. So, we're following all of the state procedures that we have for our student activity accounts. And then, but students would experience that on another level.
So, this is just a great, an opportunity for our kids. Give Jen a lot of credit for working on this. She's worked really hard on this, set up the sort of the agents for this. We've put this by our terms, by our auditors. They'll approve the practice. We want to make sure, again, our practice regarding money and finances are all in order. But I think, as Jen said, this is a great opportunity for our kids to get some real hands-on practicality of working in a business and how that sort of functions. I can imagine, as this grows and studs to pick up, there'll be more opportunities for kids to handle it. But I think just getting it going really is a credit to Jen and seeing something in a student and saying, hey, there's an opportunity here. How can we build on it? Keep going back to it, but this is one of those things that Sharon said in the NEAS report, giving kids opportunities outside of, sort of, the curriculum within our school. This is one of those opportunities. Thank you, Jen.
I mean, I think it seems like it's a really neat opportunity for students, and you can kind of see, like, the potential for where it could go from there. Like, you know, especially with, like, all the different teams and clubs. They order their own shirts, and they usually go down the road, and, you know, I mean, you could house all of that. There's great potential for growth and just thinking, even beyond just a business plan, how do you grow a business? How do you, I don't know, the marketing tactics.
Yeah, I'm excited to see this. Totally supportive. I appreciate the effort it must have taken to get it to this point. Also, thank you. Any more we can do for financial literacy for graduating students? You can see that in the workplace all the time. If I could get one thing more out of the schools, send them to high school, to college, basic financial literacy so they can function differently as employees. So, I think there's a lot of potential. Appreciate the effort, making the bust.
Why don't we put on the calendar for next June, and have the students come back after a year of experimenting the process?
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Very well done, business plan, you know, five pages, not totally, I mean, you know, just the right, you know, you know, robust, but not too much. So, it was a good, you know, read.
This seems like a very sound thing. Thank you for that extract before I went to school. It'll be fun to watch and get some updates along the way. Appreciate it. All in favor of approving the proposed business plan is noted for the Sunupi Middle High School store. Please say aye.
Aye.
Get our unanimous support, Jen. I look for a motion to approve the proposed fall extracurricular positions, twenty-two, twenty-three.
I'll make a motion to approve these extracurricular positions for the fall.
I'll second.
Golf, volleyball, three different volleyball, soccer, 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 soccer. Five, six, six soccer coaches.
I was very careful to read this list before I put it forward.
Yes.
Do you want to see your name on there anywhere?
Not yet.
The athletic director put the superintendent's name on the last one, which is funny. All in favor of approving the proposed fall extracurricular positions, I thought it was aye.
Aye.
unanimous. Thank you. With the motion to approve the superintendent to hire established certified teaching positions over the summer.
I'll make a motion to approve superintendent to hire established certified teaching positions over the summer.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion?
How many positions are we recruiting for right now?
So, I think we are down to maybe one to one and a half special ed alumni as we sit here right now.
What about teaching positions? That would be good.
Those would, so teachers were, they would be special education teachers, not current professionals.
Yeah, well, the turnover is something we're not used to, the welcomes, we're not used to. In the second we hired people, we were able to hire as much as we did to fill those spots.
Especially given you just rose a resignation today.
Yeah.
We've already got the backfield.
Yep, good. So at least in this moment, we're strong, some of us are. Um, all in favor of approving superintendent to hire established teaching positions over the summer, please say aye.
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 May it only be one and a half. Uh, looking for motion to approve the proposed allocation of up to one hundred thousand dollars to the Centipede School District contingency account.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed allocation of up to a hundred thousand to the Centipede School District contingency account.
I'll second the motion.
Discussion? Do you want to add any, um?
Sure. This comes out of our undesigned fund balance. Uh, the last two years, we've put up to seventy-five. Uh, we felt that we could put potentially up to a hundred thousand dollars this year. You have a warrant article that was put through. You always have the two-point-five account. Legislation changed two years ago. You passed the warrant article in town to allow you to put five percent of your budget away to this contingency account. Currently, there's two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in that account. We can raise that close to almost six hundred thousand. So potentially be able to put some money away for projects. It gives you some, a lot of discretion to spend that money as you fit with the public here.
Yeah, I was excited to see a hundred. All in favor of approving the proposed allocation of up to a hundred thousand dollars to Centipede School District contingency account, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, motion to approve the proposed ABC community members.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed ABC community members. I think I'll return from the last call. Jennifer Barrio, Linda Tanner, and Nora Biakso.
A second.
Nice. Yeah, it's awesome. Especially to have, um, if you can keep a straight face when I talk about the experience of going through it the first time and try to make sense of it. I was just going to say I gave you the dollar, but I can't imagine not smiling. That is intense. You were an active listener. It was good.
Yeah, you're much better informed for this time than some.
Jen, Jen will be back around and then just done this multiple times. So it was awesome for the board to have the three of you back. Well, to have three of anybody come is helpful, but not everybody's getting volunteers. But to have three experienced volunteers with different perspectives and backgrounds is wicked good. So.
Just a color more, a little further color?
Please.
So again, um, you, the board shook on and re-proposed the ABC classes for the school board last year. Part of that issue that the town is having was getting people to commit for three years. And so when you're proposing, you said people are welcome to come on for a year and we would like them back. I was really excited. I reached out to all three of them. Within five minutes, they all wrote back saying, yes, we'd be happy to do it again. So I thank you all very much for coming back and working with us.
Yeah, that's good to mention that because we had some great conversations with Josh and with Barbara, the prior town manager, about where we're aligned, where we're not in this group, return is a major term. So if we have people re-upping, that's, that's a positive. So I'm very, very excited about that. Uh, so all in favor of approving the proposed ABC community members, please say aye.
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 I can say aye when, please say aye when noted. Uh, the promotion to approve the proposed music teacher.
Make a motion to approve the proposed music teacher.
I'll second for Alex Ager.
That's okay. Now you need to get your name in the script.
Yeah. So, I'll share the low here. Uh, so any comments, questions? You don't have to.
Sean, I think we're, we have our five candidates. I think you did four of your news. Um, Alex, he was at the top of the pile. Uh, he was an art teacher from the elementary school. Our teachers were up here. Sean and Walter said that someone knew as well. So, uh, we're happy to have Alex coming on board. Uh, he's been teaching down in Andover the last few weeks.
Is this just for the middle high school?
No, that is district-wide. So he is key club.
Right. So have we established how the music program is going to look?
Yep. So Walter and Sean have, I'll point out schedules made, not particularly, two of them as well.
Yeah. Excellent. All in favor of approving the proposed music teacher, please say aye.
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 Ron and Ben here. Looking for a motion to approve the proposed student start date for Centipede Central Elementary School, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed student start date for Centipede Central Elementary School, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three.
A second. Do you want to give a little color here now? Is this here, control on this, the planning, or do you want to add much to it?
Either way, um, just given the construction project that'll be starting over the summer, EEI was looking forward to buy a little bit of time actually to get through the long weekend in September. So, um, the ask was to delay the start of school for, by a week to give that a little bit extra time to get some of the key elements done for the project.
So we'll be starting school Wednesday, September seventh, and I will work on getting an email communication out to all parents early next week. We have plenty of notification of those five names.
Middle high school.
That's for the, yeah.
August twenty-ninth is planned.
Middle high school stays as of today.
Unchanged, just for clarity, messaging from our first-time hiring members. Uh, all in favor of approving the proposed student start date for September seventh for Centipede Elementary School, please say aye.
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 Thank you very much. Animus, informational items, uh, personnel update.
Um, we have hired the additional finance support person to work with Kelly. Um, I believe her name is in your pocket. I'm not mistaken. Beth Larny. Uh, she actually started today for the, for the first time and we welcome back the board. But fairly it goes back to you asking who else we needed to hire. Uh, that was one of the other positions that we had been looking for and we have.
And we'll stay short. Um, strategic plan update.
So in your packet, uh, the strategic plan update is a yearly update that we give. The principals, I'll go through that as well as myself. Um, I gave you more of an overview as we're coming to a, to a close of the strategic plan. Um, since we started a little late, we had some COVID. We're going to run this through January. Uh, then January of twenty-twenty-three, we'll stop putting a strategic plan committee together and we'll develop a new strategic plan for the spring. So that'll be in place for the following year. Uh, but if you go through, I try to color code them. Uh, being, being green, red colorblind, I put my administration in a panic because I thought they were green, but yet they were all red. I was like, wow, we've really done well. Like, why are they all red? I said, no, they're green. That means great. They're like, no, they're red. I'm like, oops. Uh, so we, we've really done well, uh, at, at getting things done. COVID has put a little bit of a kink in some of things we, we've tried to do. But overall, uh, we were able to come back to things and continue to move. There are still some things we need to work on. We'll continue to work on those. Uh, some legislation will help us work on those. Some changes to the ED three oh-six by the State Board of Education regarding competencies. And we'll continue to work with the EST if we want to review the teacher value. But really proud of the work that all our staff have, have done over the last five years in helping us get to the point we are now. It's a lot of work. And again, to your point, Sean, and go back to Shannon's point, this built on what we've done through accreditation. It's built without curriculum. It would be like, there are lots of things, a continual process of, it's not, here's one thing, here's one thing, here's one thing. Everything sort of flows together, right? And everything's working towards the same goal. And so it's really nice to come to, close to being an end, uh, close to coming to an end of strategic plan and seeing all the wonderful green and blue checkmarks and, and achievements others made.
No red.
So do you envision that you're going to go through a similar process to develop your next strategic plan?
It's a great question here. So I, I think we would use the same process. One of the things I think we might go without would be bringing an outside facilitator. I think that we have the ability to facilitate this, um, working within, within house. It'd come up with a, a nice document, a very similar document, using that same process. But if I remember correctly, it was, it was quite expensive to use the outside facilitator. And we did that intentionally, to help with some of the credibility of moving forward that first strategic plan.
Yeah, well, after then you ask, sorry, do it in-house, save significant funding and use people's strengths and efficiency. Let's people rise and it fits on screen back. So, okay. Make sure that update. Um, project update.
Right, project update. So, um, we had a discussion today with, um, EEI, who actually got bi-weekly meetings and scheduled them to get updates on what's going on. Um, when we, I guess we, we've met twice since our last board meeting, right? So two meetings ago, we talked about just how the payment structure was going to look and the process by which we would be approving the work as it's completed. Um, you know, that, that sort of thing, the logistics of how all that was going to work. We today talked about the timeline. So EEI presented the, the work timeline that we'll be monitoring ourselves to. We're scheduled to go before the planning board next week. Plans have been submitted to the state fire marshal. So, um, we're all systems go. We reviewed the contractor list today from a cost perspective. Everything looks like it's on track despite all of the craziness that's going on in, in the construction world. We're, we're right now projecting to be right where we expect it to be. Um, and otherwise talked about, you know, the plan to like for the school start, which we just talked about. Did I miss anything? I think that's the highlights.
If it is moved to be a foster period, some.
Yeah. Yeah. So we'll be meeting every two weeks, um, to review progress. We'll have updates. Well, I guess a big update in August.
I'll give a second aside, that kind of time during the summer months.
Like during the workday.
During the work day, the work day, right?
Yeah.
So add two information items, two quick ones on, I forgot that in the beginning of the meeting. Um, checking in with, uh, Jen Correa regarding a, um, PTO update. Um, she said that, uh, First Annual Bill works family fun day is this Sunday at Veterans Field, Field Day, Style Games, Ice Cream and More, one to three P.M. They will share more about their fundraising efforts as we get back into things in the fall. Uh, somebody in the community reached out to, um, learn a little bit more about the process for a significant, potential significant donation. Um, potentially be targeted towards STEM or STEAM. So I just thought of the, um, if others want to support the, uh, school, gifts of value, five hundred, this is per policy K, uh, KCD. Gifts of value, five hundred dollars or less can be accepted by superintendent. Proposed gifts of value, five hundred dollars and one cent or more show the action of honors in a public session by the school board. Proposed gifts of value, five thousand or more, which is the one I'm referring to, uh, so it requires, um, school board to hold a public hearing regarding any action taking the gift. So for the community, if there are others that want to make targeted or anonymous or general donations, just we have a policy in place. We have a procedure and then we welcome gifts if folks want to reach out to us. They can explore that discreetly and then navigate through the process and follow all the guidelines. But I just wanted to build it out and make sure the board understood that if it's, um, more than five thousand, uh, that it's a special hearing. Uh, so it's just, you know, top notch. This is how it's done by policy and the answer.
And Russ, we, um, I think it was the last meeting we talked about, or two meetings ago? Yeah, with, with Mindy to kind of come back to the table and revisit because we had the pledges that I guess technically would be null and void relative to this project because we didn't pass the whole project. But I think there was some follow-up they were going to do. We should probably have like a, or tack it on to another set meeting.
Followed up with them today, spoke with Mindy regarding the pledges. Uh, they are prepared to reach out when appropriate. Uh, one of the things I think that we had talked about was coming out of CIP meeting and bringing something here about that next project.
Yep.
So they can promote a product. And so one of the things when we meet over the summertime, we can talk about that next step of a project to fund this for. That gives them a very targeted question to the pledger. You pledged this, but we're collecting for this now. Would you do the same in potentially a pledge?
Yeah, there is some
Yep.
very interesting potential for next step projects that could be enormously impactful and, uh, so we'll let that play its course. Is that a reasonable way to leave it and give them the time, Mindy and Jen and PTO, uh, the time they need? Uh, graduation is June tenth, six P.M. Mount Centipede parking area. What a great, uh, what a great tradition. Something good came out of the last crazy couple of years.
So just a quick aside on that, unfortunately, um, well, fortunately, I shouldn't say that. Fortunately, my daughter's graduating from high school as well that night. So I didn't even have the attendance. I will be sending Sean a quick little email and your read on my behalf to the senior class.
Usually two of us sit at the end stage and stay out of Sean's way. The tradition used to be when I joined the board with the chair, give up almost, doesn't make any sense. Cause kids don't know. It's, as glamorous as being on our board is, the kids don't, shouldn't know who we are ideally. And so if was corrected with just wanting him giving them, um, and praise to the, the kids he helped raise. And so Russ and I have just sat in the back and enjoyed a positive evening. I'm going to be at my nephew's in Connecticut. So any board members that want to go, beautiful thing. But it's, uh, congrats to the grads and to the staff.
Someone with people that's a parent as well.
Yes, and I hope you have a lot of fun, Sean. I caught regularly having fun during that. Um, next meeting is August twenty-fourth. We don't meet in July and we push the August meeting back to our current everybody educations. Uh, so just want to make sure we're back on our regular train there. Then, so we'll meet on the twenty-fourth and then we'll meet two weeks later on the, um, first Wednesday of September. We'll chart through there. By, yeah, probably September meeting, we'll talk about the, the schedule, playoff schedule for the budget hearings, project updates and all that stuff. So we can have, um, calendars tight. But, um, pretty excited when we close this meeting that we aren't going to meet again until August twenty-fourth. I think it's healthy to say that, although I didn't say it very animated way. Get off, it's a break. Manifest, looking for motion to approve the AP manifest. How about I'll make a motion to approve the manifest? We're not bad. It's really, it starts to show off. Well, let me, let me do my best at any impression. I make a motion to approve the AP manifest twenty-twenty-two dash twenty, twenty-two, hundred thirty-three thousand, five hundred sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and, uh, I blew it. It blew it.
As presented?
As presented. Can I have a, can I have a second?
Second motion to approve the AP manifest as presented.
All in favor of approving the AP manifest as presented, please say aye.
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 We're going to try that in the second round. I'm making a motion, I need, I'm making a motion to approve the payroll manifest as presented.
I'll second your motion as presented.
All in favor of approving? Second? Okay, I haven't had a word. Carry second. I clearly need to have a snack. All in favor of approving as noted, please say aye.
Aye.
Let's not tell Ed that he doesn't really have to read them out. Cause I'm going to do it next time I do it. He should catch them off. Um, next items for next meeting in August are going to be summer hires, project update, variables, we don't know what's going on in the state house, um, COVID. Um, main things will be project and just getting prepped to open. Works really well to do that late August meeting because we, because before, when I first joined, it was too long of a break and that meeting was like three and a half hours. It was brutal and it was too much overwhelming. This is two weeks. We have folks that need to, administrators that need to get their houses running and still get home at night. And then there's a lighter lift after school opens. Tends to be a smooth, positive meeting. That's enough to go on, I think. Sort of, we've done this together for a few years. Uh, we already went in on public, so I'm looking for a motion. I'm making a motion to adjourn at seven forty. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
It's always the fastest one. Every time. All in favor?
Aye.
Good night. We'll see you in August.